Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, May 17, 2022. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with an invocation and pledge of the flag. Here to do the honors is a student from Kiln Creek Elementary School, Angelina Allen. Angelina, will you please come forward and deliver the invocation and the pledge? And please tell us a little bit about yourself before you get started.
Hi, my name is Angelina Allen. I am in the fifth grade and I love God. I love the Lord with all my heart. I love to do my nails and I have a passion for gymnastics.
Excellent. All right. You want to do your invocation first?
Yes, sir. I will be reading my poem "Still I Rise" by Maya Angelou. You may write me down in history with your bitter, twisted lies. You may trod me in the very dirt, but still, like dust, I'll rise. Does my sassiness upset you? Why are you beset with gloom? 'Cause I walk like I've got oil wells pumping in my living room. Just like moons and like suns with a certainty of tides, just like hopes springing high, still, I'll rise. Did you want to see me broken? Bowed head and lower eyes, shoulders falling down like teardrops, weakened by my soulful cries? Does my haughtiness offend you? Don't you take it awful hard, 'cause I laugh like I've got gold mines digging in my own backyard. You may shoot me with your words. You may cut me with your eyes. You may kill me with your hatefulness, but still, like air, I'll rise. Out of the huts of history shame, I rise. Up from a past that's rooted in pain, I rise. I'm a black ocean leaping and wide, welling and swelling, I bear in the tide. Leaving behind nights of terror and fear, I rise. Into a daybreak that's wondrously clear, I rise. Bringing the gifts that my ancestors gave, I am the dream and the hope of the slave. I rise, I rise, I rise.
Wonderful, Angelina. Would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Angelina. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Supporting Angelina tonight are her family members and school family. We'd ask you to please stand at this time so we can recognize you. The board appreciates the encouragement that you've given to Angelina, and we thank you for bringing her here to tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is school board recognitions. Dr. Parker, I believe we have a few.
Good evening. On behalf of the school board and the superintendent, I'm pleased to present this month's recognitions. For an educator, receiving national certification is a symbol of excellence in teaching and professional growth. Newport News Public Schools is pleased to acknowledge that one of our dedicated educators recently met the standard for national certification established by the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. This educator will not only strengthen her profession, but increase academic achievement and rigor in the classroom. Please join me in congratulating Karen DiGiorgio, library media specialist at B.C. Charles Elementary School. Ms. DiGiorgio? Mrs. DiGiorgio, or Ms. DG as her students call her, completed the rigorous process to become recertified in library media pre-K through 12. Ms. DiGiorgio has served the students at B.C. Charles since 2020, and has been a part of the Newport News Public School family for 22 years. National Board certification is the highest credential in the teaching profession. The certification process usually takes between one and three years to finish, and I understand it's been a little more challenging recently because of COVID, so this is quite an honor to be able to do that during this time. Teachers successfully complete the assessment process by preparing a career portfolio of good teaching practices, student work, and multimedia examples. A reflective written component addresses teaching goals, methods, and results. Candidates also have to pass an extensive series of rigorous written exercises. Mrs. DiGiorgio, we are proud to have you on our team. Congratulations. I'm gonna take a quick picture. While she's making her way back to her seat, I'd like to acknowledge her husband who's joining us tonight. Would you please stand? Thank you. Thank you. And her principal, Ms. Oreo Robinson-Taylor. Our next honoree was recently named a state champion in debate. Jan Fettison, a junior at Warwick High School and a member of the debate team, is named the Virginia High School League Class Four Lincoln Douglas Debate State Champion. Jan, would you please come forward? This debate season, Jan earned a top placement in regional and superregional competition, giving him the opportunity to advance to state competition. During the state competition, Jan competed in the Lincoln Douglas Debate. This year's topic was, "In a democracy, a free press ought to prioritize objectivity over advocacy." Participants had to debate both sides. Jan outlined the pros and cons over a series of seven debates, receiving a final score of five wins and two losses, earning him the coveted state title. Please join us in congratulations, Jan. Great job. I'm gonna step out of the way so we can take a picture, our state champion. And again, I'd like to ask his parents to please stand. Congratulations. Thank you. I'm sure you're very proud. And I'd also like to acknowledge his debate coach, Jessica M. Sai, and his principal, Dr. Kelly Mason. Ensuring that young people are financially literate is paramount to prepare them for future financial success. Three of our recognitions this evening showcase the district's success in this area. Working in Support of Education, or WISE, is an educational organization dedicated to building financial literacy, fostering business and social entrepreneurship, and preparing students for college and the global workplace. The organization's Literacy Certification Program provides high school students with financial education and the opportunity to become certified financially literate. Students learn more about personal finance when they take the WISE standardized Financial Literacy Certification Test. This evening, we're pleased to recognize a Newport News high school that is named a Blue Star School for its students' successful performance on the WISE Financial Literacy Certification Test. Please join me in congratulating an Achievable Dream High School. Accepting this recognition on behalf of Achievable Dream is career and technical education teacher Stephanie Sadler and principal Courtney Montpoint. In order to earn the WISE Blue Star School designation, schools must have an 80% pass rate on the literacy certification test, with either a majority of their students on a given grade level taking the test, or at least 10% of the school's enrollment. This national standardized test is administered to students at the end of the personal finance course. Students who pass the test receive a Financial Literacy Certification. Ladies, please share our congratulations with your students and the remainder of the staff. Thank you so much and congratulations. This evening, we're also pleased to share that three Newport News high schools are listed among the 100 best WISE high schools teaching personal finance. This is the only national ranking that recognizes excellence in personal finance instruction among the WISE national network of schools. The 100-best ranking is determined based on the average certification test score with consideration given to the number of test takers and the socioeconomic background of the students. Please join me in congratulating the three schools: Achievable Dream High School, Menchville High School, and Woodside High School. I'm gonna call up Achievable Dream first. Achievable Dream ranks in the top third. And accepting this recognition, again, on behalf of their school community, is teacher Stephanie Sadler and principal Courtney Montpoint. Menchville High School is named as one of the 10 large high schools on the WISE list. Accepting this recognition on behalf of the Menchville High community are CTE educators Stephanie Gualtin. Ms. Gualtin? April Hurlitz was unable to join us this evening, but Dr. Michael Schumate? Dr. Schumate? Diane Zawodzki? And I'd like to acknowledge her principal, Bobby Suri. Mr. Suri? And Woodside High School also made the list, and they are ranked number 20 in the country. To acknowledge their school's success, please congratulate CTE educators Tawanda Alister? Ms. Alister? Brienne Hargrove? Jonika Yarborough? Two other members of the team were able to join us this evening, Janice Anderson and Tina Shorter. So we're gonna take a picture with all of you, but at first I'd like to thank you for equipping our students with the tools and skills they need to become college, career, and citizen-ready. So let's give them one more round of applause. I'm sorry, Dr. Dyrin Ford. I apologize, Dr. Ford. Assistant Principal, Woodside High School. Thank you. My apologies. All right, I'm gonna take a quick picture. Continuing with our WISE recognitions, oh, I'm sorry. We have three Newport News educators who are named WISE Gold Star Teachers. At least 93% of their students in at least one of their classes passed the WISE Financial Literacy Test, which is also a Virginia Board of Education-approved certification. They're present this evening. Please join me in congratulating Hope London, CTE educator at Denby High School. Lisa McAllister, also at Denby High School. And Iris Harris-Williams, formerly of Woodside, now at Enterprise Academy. The Virginia Standards of Learning for Economics and Personal Finance require instruction in economic concepts, economic reasoning, decision-making, and problem-solving. High school students have to meet a state requirement to complete a one-credit economics and personal finance course prior to graduation. With the help of these dedicated educators, their students are not only satisfying a graduation requirement, they're earning state and national certification. Congratulations to you and your students on this notable achievement. And as they make their way to their seats, I'd like to acknowledge their school administrators. We have Michelle Huffstahler and Jason Holler from Denby High School. Dr. Darwin Mills at Enterprise Academy. And the Division's Career and Technical Education Specialist, Kristy Hopkins. And some of you have family members joining. Let's ask your family members to stand and be recognized too. Please stand. The family members of our honorees. Thank you. Thanks for joining us this evening. That concludes our recognitions for this month. We're gonna take a short break, so during this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight. So we'll stand in recess for about eight minutes. Thank you.
During the month of April, our school celebrated a special group of students that continually display resilience, tenacity, and bravery. April is designated as the Month of the Military Child, honoring the important role children play in the armed forces community. At Sanford Elementary, airmen and sailors volunteered their morning greeting students and staff. After students hopped off the bus, walked safely across the street, or were dropped off by parents, military men and women were there to wish them a great day and hand out breakfast. One airman even brought along her therapy dog, which was more than happy to greet students by receiving a good tummy rub. Sanford principal Megan Almond thanked the servicemen and women for their time and dedication to our country. At No Wood Meadows Elementary, students spent a half-day focused on completing patriotic-themed STEM activities. Kindergartners rotated through different stations in their classrooms, building high-flying rockets and creating colorful firework art through the chemical reaction between vinegar and baking soda. In Caitlin Wilmer's first-grade classroom, students used their engineering knowledge to build custom catapults and enjoyed testing their creation for accuracy and distance. Third graders in Gloria Morgan's classroom used coding and Ozobots to creatively map some of the places students have lived across the globe, or where they would like to eventually visit. Diana Brown's third graders worked in teams to construct a flagpole using limited materials, complete with a working pulley system to proudly raise the American flag. And in fourth-grade classrooms, students accurately designed a military base using their mathematical knowledge of area and perimeter. Since General Stanford Elementary is located on Fort Eustis, and their student population is 100% military children, April was a busy month for the Proud Eagles. Purple is the combined color of all the military branches, so General Stanford celebrated Purple Up Day with a morning of music. To help kick off the day, the talented Trade Doc Military Band greeted students and staff entering the school. Students responded to the fun upbeat pop songs by dancing in the hallways and starting their school day on a high note. Later in the month, military family life counselors guided every student through a meaningful art project. Counselors read aloud the book "The Invisible String" by Patrice Carst, which illustrates that even when a family member is deployed around the world, or military families are stationed at a new location, they are still connected with family and friends through love. Students made this lesson tangible by decorating Purple Hearts with words of encouragement to adorn the school's hallways. They also designed colorful bookmarks with positive and uplifting phrases that were randomly gifted to their classmates. General Stanford wrapped up the Month of the Military Child with a grand event for the entire Fort Eustis community. The school's PTA teamed up with the base's child and youth programs to organize and host a massive Purple Up Party. On a Friday afternoon, military families were invited to enjoy fun games, free food, and raffle prizes. They also had opportunities to explore a wealth of valuable community and military resources, as well as tour some of the amazing vehicles and equipment that make our military superior. School staff and military personnel volunteered together to serve the dedicated families and children during the Month of the Military Child. For about five months, students at Menchville and Warwick High Schools have been monitoring and growing native freshwater eel grass in their classrooms. It's part of a grant the Mariners Museum received called Bay Watershed Education and Training, or BEWET. For the next three years, this grant will allow ninth graders at Menchville and Warwick to partner with Mariners Museum to improve the quality of the ecosystem in and around Mariners Lake. The spring science classes from each high school took turns visiting Mariners Lake to plant the native eel grass they'd been growing in their classrooms over the winter months. Working with Mariners Museum educators and student interns from Christopher Newport University, the high school students carefully transplanted the eel grass in the shallow shores of Mariners Lake, where it will take root to provide sediment stability, increase water clarity, and create a habitat for wildlife. While at the lake, students rotated through learning stations to expand their understanding of the Chesapeake Bay watershed, and used scientific instruments to measure the water quality of the James River and Mariners Lake, which are both located on either side of the historic Lions Bridge. Through this practical learning experience with BEWET and Mariners Museum, Menchville and Warwick students are moving far beyond textbook knowledge by gaining hands-on experience in lake restoration and relevant watershed investigation. Students across Newport News Public Schools are experiencing new heights of academic success through a virtual STEM classroom. The Flying Classroom is a STEM-based supplemental digital curriculum for kindergarten through eighth-grade students, and it allows scholars to expand their knowledge through hands-on design challenges, worldwide explorations, and investigations into solutions to relevant problems. The Flying Classroom was established by pilot and explorer Captain Barrington Irving. In 2007, at the age of 23, Captain Irving set two Guinness World Records as the youngest person and first Black pilot to fly solo around the world. In February, Captain Irving moved beyond virtual by personally visiting 10 elementary and middle schools in Newport News. Through videos and photos, Captain Irving shared some of his amazing expeditions that have spanned more than 50 countries. By expanding on his many unique excursions, Captain Irving seeks to inspire students to dream big as they gain the knowledge and experiences to see their futures soar to unimaginable heights. During the multi-day trip, Captain Irving also visited the Aviation Academy Magnet Program at Denby High School. During a tour of the nationally-recognized STEM site, Captain Irving saw firsthand how Aviation Academy students sharpened their skills on cutting-edge flight simulators, study airport operations management, and learn about airplane construction and repair in the Aviation Maintenance Technology Lab. This is the perfect learning site for Captain Irving's next project. By formally partnering with Captain Barrington Irving, over 100 career and technical education students at Denby High School will have the opportunity to gain real-world learning experiences through an aircraft restoration and acquisition project. Starting in May of 2022 and continuing into next school year, Aviation Academy students will begin work on restoring the single-engine Columbia 400 aircraft that Captain Irving flew while setting his world records. Students enrolled in business and marketing courses will assist the project with financial planning and purchasing necessary parts. Through this one-of-a-kind partnership and the Flying Classroom virtual experience, students at all grade levels are stepping into a larger world of possibilities as their futures take flight. After being postponed for two years due to the ongoing pandemic, one of the most anticipated and celebrated events in Newport News Public Schools returned this year. In April, the 50th Annual George Green Field Day was hosted at Todd Stadium, giving special education students the opportunity to be celebrated and cheered on as they enjoyed a morning of exciting games. Organized by adapted physical education lead Susan McCullough, a small army of dedicated PE teachers set up a variety of sports, relay games, and physical activities perfectly suited to the special athletes. In the tradition of the Olympic Games, teachers, administrators, families, and student volunteers enthusiastically cheered on every student athlete as they entered the stadium carrying their school banner, while Woodside's pep band set the tone. Students then rotated through each station, where PE teachers, middle and high school student volunteers, and community partners ensured a day of active fun which encouraged students to build confidence in themselves through sports. And even though no scores were recorded, the smile on every student's face was enough evidence that George Green Field Day was a success on many levels.
Well, welcome back, and we hope you enjoy this month's school board spotlight. We'd like to acknowledge at this time that we do have, from Newport News, Troop Six of the scouts that are here earning their merit badge. Would you please stand up so you can be recognized at this time? The board thanks you for learning about civic life and attending our meeting tonight. We also have Delegate Simons, who represents us in the General Assembly here tonight, and she would like to say a few words. and she would like to say a few words, so we, the Board, would like to hear you speak at this time.
Thank you so much. It's really lovely to be here. I bring greetings from the Virginia General Assembly. We are still working on the budget, so unfortunately, I don't have any definitive news for you on the budget, but I just wanted to come and let you know that I am fighting for you all, and I am on the conference committee for the charter school and the laboratory school bills that are being negotiated as part of the budget. And I have a song that I sing all day. The school boards have to be in any changes to any charter school or laboratory school law. We have to have accountability with SOL testing and a curriculum across the board for everyone. And third, we have to have highly qualified teachers. And I will not be supporting any project, any laws that do not include the school board and highly qualified certified teachers. But I just wanted to let you know that I'm up there fighting for school boards and also for school construction funding, because I know that that is so important to all of us. Right now, over half the buildings in Virginia are over 50 years old, and that's just unacceptable. And I'm really hoping we have good news from the budget, that they do put some historic investments into school construction. Unfortunately, Virginia has made no significant contribution to school infrastructure in the last 12 years. So the state of Virginia hasn't made any significant contributions in 12 years, and we really need to turn that around. We need to perform, we have something, the Literary Fund, that all of you know about, and we really need to make sure that we modernize that and put more money towards school construction. So thank you for letting me come and give you an update from the General Assembly. I'm still up there working hard for the teachers in the district. And, oh, one last thing, I just wanted to say that I'm really gonna miss Pat Fineran. He was great. I looked through my phone, I must have like 50 texts that I sent to him, because he's somebody that when I'm in committee and there's a difficult issue that comes up, that's always responsive, and he's always been there to support us in the General Assembly and make sure that your voice is heard, and the students of Newport News are well-represented in Richmond. So just a shout out to, I know that Mr. Fineran is retiring, but I want to thank him and all of you for all you do. Thanks.
Thank you, Delegate Simons. All right. During our regular meetings, we are going to transition to item two of our agenda. During our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and also towards the end of the meeting. The school board recognizes that during the pandemic, some members of the public may not be able to join us in person. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via web form, email, or voicemail, up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the Board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments, and we will respond at a later time. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that when you come up, you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on at the end of the dais to your left. A yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light indicates that your time is up, and we ask you to conclude your comments at that time. So as your name is called, please come forward. First card I have is Valerie Fashion.
Good evening, Dr. Parker and school board members. My name is Valerie Fashion, and I'm a retired librarian, and I'm also substitute in the Newport News Public Schools. Education is the new currency of the 21st century. How will the Newport News School District address the below-grade issues of our students? What are the guidelines for helping the students get on grade level? The PALS and the Eureka Curriculum that's being used right now, they're awful, and the students are struggling with those programs. A longtime study by the Annie E. Casey Foundation found that students were not proficient in reading, if they're not proficient in reading by the end of the third grade, they are four times more likely to drop out of high school than proficient readers. In fact, 88% of the students who failed to earn a high school diploma were struggling readers in the third grade. By the beginning of the third grade, kids are expected to be able to do basic writing, editing, and revising. They're also expected to have mastered basic reading skills and start focusing on comprehension. Third grade has been identified as important to reading literacy, because it is the final year students are learning to read, after which the students are reading to learn. If they're not proficient readers when they begin the fourth grade, as much as half of the curriculum they will be taught will be incomprehensible. The question for Newport News Public Schools Board then becomes whether students who are not proficient readers by the end of the third grade, should they be retained? Or what programs are you all gonna put in place for them to bring them up to grade level? Students are struggling on the elementary school level. The elementary students are not given any spelling words to study, yet they're required to pass a PALS spelling test with words they have not studied, they can't pronounce, nor have they seen in their lifetime. They deserve a top-rated education. Thank you for your time.
Next card I have is Pam Hall.
Good evening. I know the vote was taken to accept the city's plan to rebuild Huntington on their property where Doris Miller Community Center sits, but the people in the southeast community still oppose this plan. We, the southeast community, are eager to get the school reopened as soon as possible, but was there a study done to determine the impact on the children with no community center in the southeast community for several years? What are the children supposed to do without a community center and a playground in their neighborhood? As crime escalates nationally, we need more places where children can learn how to solve problems without guns, not fewer places. Please rethink this plan and consider the future of the children in the southeast community. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are there any additional cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there being no additional cards, I do have one card from a non-resident at this time, which would normally go into item six, but in the interest of time, I'm gonna call Jennifer Hergit up to speak now.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Is there anyone that did not receive my email today to get some information? I'm Jennifer. I'm a mother and a grandmother. By a show of hands, is anyone here aware of the Pfizer documents for the COVID-19 vaccine? Anyone? The COVID-19 vaccine. Is anyone aware of the Pfizer documents? I've personally spoken with five doctors, and they were unaware. The FDA tried to have the documents sealed for 75 years, until 2096. A Texas judge ordered the release, and the first set came out on March 1st. I've read them, and I'm a strong supporter of informed consent. There are nine pages of adverse reactions that were known by February 28, 2021, over a year ago. Within these nine pages, autoimmune is noted approximately 40 times. Should your immune system be compromised, your body cannot protect itself properly. Has anyone here heard about the hepatitis outbreak in children? It's been on the news. Hepatitis is mentioned six times in these nine pages. Not being talked about is shingles, also called herpes zoster. I know of five people that have gotten shingles. Two of them were in their twenties, one of them was hospitalized. They said it was because of stress. This normally occurs in people over the age of 50. Maybe a weakened immune system. Herpes is in these nine pages over 50 times. Over 50 times. My hope is that parents have informed consent prior to vaccinating their children or any family member. I have additional information if anyone would like it. I thank you, board members, for allowing me this time.
Thank you. We thank all our citizens for their comments this evening. We will now move on to Section Three, the Consent Agenda, which includes 3.01 minutes from the special meeting April 19, 2022, 3.02 minutes from the work session on April 19, 2022, 3.03 minutes from the regular session on April 19, 2022, 3.04 minutes from the special meeting on April 19, 2022, 3.05 financial reports, including the revenue report for March 2022, the expense report for March 2022, child nutrition reports for March 2022, 3.06 the personnel report, 3.07 budget transfer. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Yes, I make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hunter. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I do have comment. Ms. Brown, it should have been April 2022.
For the revenue report?
Financial.
Okay, so I'm gonna read these over again then. So 3.01 minutes from the special meeting, April 19, 2022, 3.02 minutes from the work session, April 19, 2022, 3.03 minutes from the regular session, April 19, 2022, 3.04 minutes from the special meeting, April 19, 2022, 3.05 financial reports, including revenue report for April 2022, the expense report for April 2022, child nutrition reports for April 2022, 3.06 personnel report, and 3.07 budget transfer.
Correct.
All right.
I will remake the motion that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
All right.
I'll say for that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Ammon?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Tonight, we do not have any action items in item four, so we will move on to item five, our Reports and Information section, which is, our first item is 5.01, the Monthly School Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two items on the Monthly School Update. We recently sent some information out to our community regarding the, a little slight uptick we've seen in COVID transmissions in our community, so I've invited Mrs. Carlson, Nancy Carlson, to come back up and give us an update on the level of community transmission and any important updates that our community may need to know regarding us remaining safe in our schools and in our community. And we have some follow-up information regarding summer school. We're tracking our enrollment trends, hiring trends, and we will provide a brief update for the Board on that as well.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to give a brief update on COVID. I'm Nancy Carlson. I'm the Health Services Supervisor for Newport News Public Schools. The level of community transmission right now is low for Newport News. The transmission is determined by three metrics: new COVID admissions per 100,000 population in the past seven days, the percent of staffed inpatient beds occupied by COVID-19 patients, and the total number of new cases per 100,000 in the past seven days. Our community transmission, it's really community level that those three metrics are determined. Our community transmission right now is actually high. It's 134.47 cases per 100,000. I just wanted to point that out. But according to the three metrics, we are still low, which is, of course, good. As you can see, the numbers have started to go up, as Dr. Parker indicated. We have had, April, after spring break, let me say, our numbers were still low, and they started going up, as you can see, towards the end of April and are still continuing to rise. Our last data, which was May 2nd through the 6th, we had 86 positive student cases and 27 positive employee cases. As a reminder, everyone should be doing the daily health screening before they come to work in school. Individuals with any COVID-19 symptoms need to stay home for five days after their symptoms begin, regardless of their vaccination status. If a student exhibits any COVID symptoms while at school, the student should report to the isolation room, and a parent or guardian will be contacted to pick them up. The parent and guardian will be offered an at-home ByAnex Now test kit. In the event that the test is negative, the student may report to school when their symptoms have subsided and they're fever-free without the use of medication for 24 hours. If their test is positive, they do need to isolate at home for five days. Continuing the protocols, no quarantine is required for individuals who are up to date on their vaccine, which, for adults and anyone 18 and over in our student population, does include receiving the booster vaccine. Those people, if they're identified as a close contact, would not have to quarantine. Anyone who is not up to date on their COVID vaccine, who is, also, excuse me, who also has not had COVID in the last 90 days, if they're identified as a close contact, they do need to quarantine for five days. Anyone returning from quarantine or isolation after five days must wear a well-fitted mask for days six through 10. If they're unwilling or unable to wear the well-fitted mask for days six through 10, they really need to stay home for the full 10 days. Like I said a little bit ago, we do still have the ByAnex Now home test kits that are available for all students and staff. The tests are done with a virtual monitor through the eMed Navica website. Results are available in 15 minutes. With a negative result, a student or staff member may come back to work in school once their symptoms have improved and, again, they're fever-free for 24 hours without the use of medication. And if their test is positive, of course, they need to stay home and isolate for five days. And at that time, we are still doing contact tracing. We contact trace all adults and children when we have what's considered an outbreak, which, of course, we're working very closely with the Peninsula Health District. Thank you. That's all I have at this time.
Any questions before we switch to summer school?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Karen Lynch will come up and talk about the summer programming, and joining her is Mrs. Nina Farish, our Director of Human Resources.
Good evening. My name is Karen Lynch. I am the Extended Learning Supervisor, and tonight, Ms. Nina Farish, Director of HR, and I are going to update you on the growing numbers and enrollment in Spark. This summer, our Spark program will offer students opportunities to receive remediation in English and math, enrichment in science and the arts, credit recovery, and credit advancement. I am excited to announce we already have over 4,400 students enrolled in these various opportunities, and numbers are still growing. Currently, we have 3,310 students enrolled in Spark, 2,594 of these students are enrolled at our eight elementary sites, and 716 students are enrolled at our middle school site. Our high school counselors are busy enrolling students for recovery and advancement credits. We already have 122 students enrolled in Session One and 38 students enrolled in Session Two. At our STEAM centers, we have 523 students enrolled in our Cyber Camp, and 400 students are enrolled in our Astro and Eager Camps. We have also added a Theater and Arts Camp for our middle schoolers, which will be located at Heritage High School. We are in the process of enrolling 30 students for this unique opportunity. This slide highlights the next steps in regards to communicating with our families. On May 27, we will mail Spark and STEAM acceptance letters to families. Then, our Transportation Department will work diligently to cluster the students together Then our Transportation Department will work diligently to cluster the students together according to addresses to create bus runs. On June twenty-third, we will mail Spark and STEAM postcards to families indicating the Spark site their children will attend, along with the homeroom number. On June twenty-third, families will also be able to access web query to locate bus information. Also on this slide are important dates to include start dates for our programs. On June twenty-seventh is the first day for High School Session One. On July fifth will be the first day for Elementary and Middle School Spark, along with our Cyber STEAM Camp. On July thirteenth is the first day for High School Session Two. On July eighteenth is the first day for Astro and Eager Camps. And all programs will end July twenty-eighth, which is a Thursday. And now, Ms. Farish will update us concerning the hiring process.
Thank you. Thank you. We started our Spark recruitment efforts in March. Uh, we solicited to our internal employees. And, of course, the pay for teachers for summer school is forty dollars an hour. Um, as of today, we have two hundred and thirty-eight teachers hired for Spark Session One, forty-seven for Spark Session Two, and for the STEAM program, we have thirty-two. And many of those teachers from the Session One will also be working Sessions Two and for STEAM and also. Um, also, we have seventy candidates waiting to be vetted for offers. Uh, we are confident all of these are internal employees. And based upon the numbers that Ms. Lynch just shared with you, we are confident that we have enough staff internally to support the students. Any questions?
Oh, yes. Mr. Ely.
I just want to say, after you see the hard work that's been going in to make sure our children have opportunities this summertime. So I just want to thank you. This is a wide range of, and it's throughout the city, a given opportunity. So I'm excited for our year. I'm excited for Spark. And also give our kids a continuous chance to learn year-round. So thank you so much for that amazing presentation.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would just add that, um, our summer reading initiatives are still being planned. Um, and we are developing a one-pager with, um, that all, and so parents can find anything that's going on, not just Newport News, but the libraries, parks and rec, boys and girls. We're finding out about programs all over the place, and we, and we're, um, offering to advertise for any groups that are working with kids over the summer, put it in one place where they can find it. And then also, our parents developing that where they have the contact information, they can hit the link and go directly to those sources for summer programs. And we're also encouraging any groups working with kids over the summer to join us in our summer reading initiative. So our, the library already has our summer reading list. Uh, we're hoping that we can continue to work with them. Um, they, we don't have bookmobiles anymore in Newport News, and, uh, that's been a pro- that's been something the library, the library, uh, uh, staff have asked us about, um, if we could help support them in getting to the communities and distributing books. You know, right now, we have books on bikes, but, uh, we still don't have bookmobiles. But, uh, we're gonna work out a solution this summer, and we're gonna try to find a way to get those, like, get the library with us, maybe some of our staff out into communities where we, kids can check out books and return books, um, in the community without having to visit the library system. So a lot of good things working out, and I applaud these two ladies for the hard work they're doing behind the scenes. Mr. Chairman, that's all we have for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Best.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item five point oh two, which is our K through five English textbook adoption.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chairman Searl's Law, Dr. Parker, and members of the board. My name is Shondalin Thomas, and I am the Elementary English Supervisor. I'm here this evening to share information regarding the Elementary English textbook adoption process and to ask the board to consider the committee's final recommendation. Using data to inform decision-making is critical in any business or line of work, but it is essential to education. The National Assessment of Educational Pro- Pro- Progress, excuse me, known as NAEP, reading proficiency data is one dataset that is used to identify trends in student achievement. The national proficiency scores have been holding steady at a low average rate of about thirty percent for over ten years. Virginia's NAEP scores have been slightly above the national average, but began taking a dip over the past five years. Similarly, the state reading achievement data has steadily declined across grades through three, three through five, and among all subgroups, as evidenced by SOL data. Both the NAEP and SOL data indicates that educators need to think differently about what is taught and how it is taught in our schools. In response to this data, Virginia hosted its first Early Literacy Summit in two thousand and nineteen. During this summit, the body of research known as the Science of Reading was introduced to state and division leaders to inform and support the need for change. Former Superintendent Lane also outlined steps to improve literacy achievement in Virginia and prompted divisions to carefully examine their literacy beliefs, practices, curriculum, and resources. To inform how we teach, the VDOE encouraged divisions to lean on the reading research to develop and deepen our understanding of how to teach reading. Following the lead of the VDOE, our division began participating in LETTERS, which stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. This professional development course is specifically designed to assist teachers in deepening their understanding of how the brain learns to read and process information. It also includes strategies for how to put this research into practical application in daily instruction and assessment. As a second response to the VDOE's guidance, our pre-K twelve literacy plan was developed, which outlines five action steps Newport News Public Schools will take to improve literacy achievement. Two action steps in the plan contain strategies that influence how and what we teach. Action step one addresses foundational skill learning in pre-K two to include developing teachers' knowledge in the reading research. Additionally, action step two addresses providing equitable opportunities to a viable curriculum, systematic instruction, resources for all students. This step encompasses providing access to high-quality instructional materials for all of our learners. This is what brings me here before you today. National and state data, reading research, the Early Literacy Summit, VDOE guidance, and the Division's pre-K twelve literacy plan served as key factors as we began the textbook adoption process. The last time the Elementary English Department engaged in the process was two thousand and twelve. The revision and adoption process for both standards and textbooks are on a seven-year cycle. In two thousand seventeen, the VDOE adopted new English standards of learning that set the expectations for student achievement at each elementary level. Knowledge gleaned from the Science of Reading research was evident in those new standards and marked the beginning of a shift to evidence-based instruction and prompted examining textbooks from a different lens. In two thousand nineteen, the VDOE released its list of approved textbooks, and Elementary English was also eligible for an adoption. However, due to the unprecedented times, we began the process this year. In the interim, the Division has provided teachers with a variety of evidence-based supplemental resources to support our curriculum. The textbook adoption process began in August of two thousand and twenty-one and concluded in April, two thousand and twenty-two. In the next few slides, I will share each stage of the process. As I stated, in August, we began the process by reviewing the textbooks that were on the state-approved list. After careful re- review of these materials, it was decided to begin the Request for Proposals, or RFP, to process the select and select the most appropriate high-quality materials for our students. A set of required and desired criteria for textbooks was developed using the State Textbook Evaluation Tool and other research-based sources, such as Ed Reports and the National Reading League. This process began in November. Additionally, the textbook adoption committee was formed. Careful attention was made during the process to ensure representation from both Title I and non-Title I schools and our K twelve collaborative departments. The committee was comprised of two teachers from each grade level, two reading specialists, two administrators, an ESL and Special Education Instructional Specialist, and myself. In January, the committee reviewed and be, uh, received, excuse me, and began reviewing five proposal packages and textbooks. Members reviewed and rated each textbook using a common rubric that evaluated three components. Component one, alignment with VDOE English standards, the UBD framework, and the Newport News Public Schools' pre-K twelve literacy plan. Component two, instructional design and the student experience. Component three, instructional planning and support. This review period was from January eighteenth through March fourth. From January eighteen through March fourth, textbooks for each grade level from each of the vendors were available here at the school board office for teachers and the public to review and provide comment. Teachers were also given digital access codes to each textbook and any applicable online resources to aid them in the review process. On March twenty-second and twenty-third, vendors were invited to give presentations and host a Q and A session for the committee to assist in the process. Committee members were able to receive answers to any specific questions that they had from each vendor. After those sessions and composite scores, two textbooks, Lexia Core Five and McGraw-Hill Wonders, were selected to enter the negotiation process. At the conclusion of the negotiation process, the committee deliberated and presented its final recommendation for adoption. Upon final evaluations, negotiations, and a consensus vote, the committee rendered the decision of cancellation no award on April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This was due to no satisfaction in the area specific to the scope of work and contributed to their decision of cancellation. So now I'd like to share with you some additional rationale for our recommendation. We had three main reasons that also contributed to the committee's decision. The need for increased community and teacher input. Evaluation responses collected during the evaluation period was minimal from teachers and the community. The committee recognizes the value in having greater input from both our teachers and our community to help inform them in their decision-making process. They are also committed to work towards implementing strategies that will result in increased input in our next evaluation period, such as providing digital access to materials, um, to families, just like we did for teachers. Additionally, scores in some of the key components of the instructional design and student experience, which encompasses the level in which the textbook's content, addresses, and/or shows alignment with the reading research and best practice were low. Another key component, instructional planning and support, received low to medium ratings. Armed with the knowledge that they have gained from their participation in the LETTERS Professional Development Course, the committee felt the textbooks did not adequately reflect the content, knowledge, and practical application strategies that they currently possess. Lastly, timing. Teachers are engaged in heavy professional development this year in both literacy and math with Eureka, with Eureka Coaching and the LETTERS Professional Development. We feel that teachers are still acclimating themselves to the Eureka Math Curriculum, and the committee felt that teachers needed some separation between adoptions. We felt that the current climate in our schools would not support or welcome a new curriculum or textbook at this time. So our next steps is to come for, to you today, come forward to you today. So the Elementary English Textbook Adoption Committee is asking the board to consider its recommendation of no award cancellation of the RFP and a reconvening of the committee to seek new proposals in the fall of two thousand and twenty-two. In the interim, the Elementary English Department and the Office of Teaching and Learning will continue to ensure that teachers have the appropriate evidence-based resources to provide rigorous instruction for all learners. Thank you for your time, and at this que- at this time, do you have any questions that Lori Wall, Director of Elementary Curriculum, and I could answer for you?
Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for the, uh, uh, presentation, Ms. Thompson. How do you plan to get the public involved in assessing the reading material?
One of the things that the committee talked about was, um, as I stated, providing digital access codes to families so that they can go online and they can review the textbooks just in the same manner as the teachers did. The other thing is that doing a little bit more, uh, better job of communicating the review process so that families are aware of what we're doing and the timeline in which they need to come and provide us with some comments.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Uh, Ms. Best?
The two textbooks that were the final two, when you open back up the, um, request again, would those be considered or are those out? That's one.
When we do a new, uh, proposal, the, uh, proposals go out to all vendors, and they are welcome to solicit again.
Okay. And the second question, one of the, um, some feedback that I received as far as reading is concerned is the way that we kind of do it in Newport News without currently having a textbook. It is difficult, but it's even more difficult for new teachers. Can you talk a little bit about how they get assistance and, and how we can feel good about where we at with that?
Do you want to take that option?
Um, currently, you know, uh, we have curriculum support in our department. So we have reading specialists in every school, and some schools, too, reading specialists that work alongside our teachers, both in planning and implementation in their classroom. Um, this year, our curriculum team worked really hard to listen to teacher feedback around what supports do you need in the interim while we're in the textbook adoption, um, process? So there are additional anchor lessons that guide teachers. There are additional, additional resources that they have supported to them. And then they're always welcome if they are in a planning session or if they are implementing, they can reach out to our team to say, hey, I need some help with, um, kind of navigating, since I'm, I'm new to, to this. But anybody, doesn't matter whether you're a new teacher or a veteran teacher, the support is always, um, a, an offer for us to come out to see them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Searl's Law?
Uh, well, thank you for the informative presentation. And I know, um, I actually admire you all tabling it just for a little bit, um, being mindful of the needs of our teachers and have them going through LETTERS training and other training, um, of this school year. I'm curious about LETTERS training and other textbooks or other organizations, school districts, that use, um, LETTERS training and specific textbooks. Have we looked into seeing what, or what places are choosing those types of, you know, what, what they're choosing, basically?
Yeah, that's an interesting que- you would ask that. Um, I was just in a conversation this afternoon, talking with people around the country that are in textbook adoption, that are also in LETTERS training. And so it's a national conversation happening. We're part of that conversation, um, and coming before you today, we, um, this will help to know where are we going, um, and what are other divisions doing. Uh, there, there's not a silver bullet, no matter what textbook we, we purchase. Our curriculum team will certainly have to think about supplemental pieces with our curriculum, along with coaching. And so as we look at other proposals, we certainly will beforehand reach out to other divisions around the country, as well as the Commonwealth, to talk about what's working for you, what have you adopted pre, uh, now? How have you used your LETTERS training as you've thought about, um, your textbook adoption process? So it's definitely a collaborative effort.
Okay. That's exciting to hear, because I know it's been a big, you know, a heavy lift for teachers to do the LETTERS training. And if they feel that the resource that they get, you know, in terms of their textbook, uh, being something that's communicable, they, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Aiman?
All right. Um, thank you, uh, and thank you for going through sort of the rationale and where you guys have come to your conclusion. And I think, um, with more experience with LETTERS training under our belt, it's gonna be better to s- and with this year, with the one-to-one devices, it's gonna be interesting to see what fits best. Um, I don't know if this is a question or a comment, but, uh, having been part of the, um, the Long Range Facilities Committee that we've done, trying to get community in- committee that we've done trying to get community in, uh, input, um, I just want to throw out as a parent, you know, thinking about, uh, children learning reading, sometimes it's hard to sort of see where maybe the, um, administration and teachers are coming from what they need. But as a parent, maybe what we've experienced or our other children have experienced, um, have you thought about having parent involvement? Or maybe as part of a, we're thinking about this curriculum or that curriculum, kind of giving a sample of if we got this, this might be what a week of third grade reading would look like. So they can sort of have that, um, that touchstone of fitting it in sort of their experience to see what might work best for their children as they know them.
Absolutely, we'll consider that as we're moving forward, thinking about how we can increase, um, community engagement. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll now move on to item five point oh three, which is the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three federal funding applications.
Good evening, Chairman, Mr. Brown, Vice Chairman Searl's Law, School Board members, and Dr. Parker. The federal program team appreciates the opportunity to support the division's academic agenda through the federal grants awarded to Newport News Public School. Each grant is written to embrace the support, our journey to, to embrace and support, I'm sorry, our Journey Twenty Twenty-Five strategies as measured by the state and federal monitoring. The federal program team manages and monitors federal grants that support equitable services for students and complements evidence-based programs and structures currently offered in Newport News Public Schools. Over the next few slides, I will share information on each grant, Title One, Title Two, Title Three, and Title Four for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Our funding plan includes the purpose of each grant, a four-year trend, and a breakdown of our allocations. The grants were written using updated allocations or level funding, which is last year's funding. The federal funding provide, provided is roughly in Title One, eleven point three million dollars, Title Two, one point three million dollars, Title Three, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and in Title Four, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Title One Part A, purpose is to improve basic programs by providing fair, equal, and significant opportunities to improve academic achievement in our schools with the highest concentration of students from low-income families. And twenty twenty funds were increased by one point eight million from the previous year. And twenty-one, we had level funding. Twenty-two, we had a slight increase of about eighteen thousand. And then for the twenty twenty-three school year, we plan to use level funding, which was last year's funding. Title One serves over eighty-three hundred students in our pre-K centers and fourteen identified elementary Title One schools. As mentioned earlier, the purpose of Title One funding is to improve the academic achievement in schools with the highest concentration of students with low-income families. Additional support is provided to our fourteen identified schools in pre-K centers to impact the quality of instruction. This is accomplished through the skills of our two school-based interventionists at each of our Title One schools who provide group or targeted instructional support in the areas of reading and/or mathematics to expand students' academic development. We also have seven additional Title One school-based reading specialists that will be assigned to selected schools to implement a comprehensive literacy program by collaborating with teachers and administrators. They assist in analyzing data of the school's literacy program and sharing feedback for next steps towards student growth. The specialists also assist students, one-on-one or in small groups, with building their literacy skills. Instructional specialists support teachers in providing authentic literacy initiatives and mathematics best practices. Uh, the specialist also models, collaborates, and coaches with teachers through intensive professional development. Our family engagement specialist serves as a key liaison as well as a part of the network of assisting for students, family, and school community. The team fosters an active partnership between the families and the school by organizing programs and activities that enhance the school's climate. In addition, they connect families from agencies and resources. Within the last year or so, we went from seven family engagement specialists to twelve, and I believe we will continue to grow. Title One also supports the Newport News Pre-K Program in collaborating with the Virginia Preschool Initiative, VPI. The federal program staff is supported by Title One funding along with the pre-K administrators' positions, paraprofessionals, and technology support. Title One schools receive an additional PALS assistant who is responsible for implementing early literacy intervention instruction for our teachers. Each grant also has miscellaneous expenses such as mileage, contract services, printing costs, materials and supplies, as well as indirect cost. The met, the next few slides will demonstrate a few of the activities and programs supported by our Title One funds, such as our pre-K, pre-K program, family engagement initiatives, as well as some of our professional development. At Newsome Park, our Title One, uh, funds provide for a STEM lab for students to explore and expand their knowledge in STEM fields. The literacy lab mission is to provide students who are in need with individualized reading instruction to improve their literacy skills. Lead, uh, this will lead to greater success, uh, across the board academically. Last year, we went from four literacy lab, additional literacy lab for our Title One schools. In this, this coming year, we're going to move up to seven. So they will, uh, be able to get additional support. Our second grant is Title Two Part A. The purpose of Title Two funding is to improve the quality of teaching and leadership through recruitment and professional development. The grant provides supplement funding to support effective instruction, improve teacher quality, and increase the number of properly licensed and endorsed teachers in our classrooms. In two thousand twenty, funds were increased by thirty-five thousand. And twenty-one, we had an increase of a hundred and ninety-five thousand. And twenty-two, there was a decrease of roughly two thousand. And then again, in twenty-two, twenty-three, we're going to use level funding. Title Two funds are utilized to support staff and students in grades K through twelve by providing division-level instructional coaches and specialists to assist teachers in providing authentic initiatives and best practices and all core content. The coaches, uh, research, collaborate with school teams and administrators, and design model lessons for our teachers. Private schools are also allocated a portion of Title Two funding. And this past year was in the amount of about forty-seven thousand, and they use that to enhance, uh, their academic programs. The grant also has miscellaneous expenses, uh, as mentioned before, for indirect costs in materials and supplies and also supports our professional development. Title Three, Part A Grant, supports language instruction for English learners and immigrant youth. Funding is used to address English language proficiency and academic achievement of English learners. The team follows the provision of language instruction, educational programs, and activities that increase knowledge and skills of teachers who serve Ls. Title Three funding also provides enhanced instructional opportunities for immigrant youth. Over the last four years, Title Three funding has increased or has remained at level funding. Title Three funding supports our family engagement specialists who focus on English learner population. The engagement specialist is the key liaison between the students, family, and school community. The specialist conducts home visits, communicates, and provides an additional bridge between the families and the school community while providing connections to community agencies and resources to families as needed. The funding also helps support ongoing professional development through two split teacher coaching positions. The teacher coaches help reinforce implementation of strategies and best practices for teachers working with our Ls population in pre-K through twelve. The Ls team is provided professional development with the Virginia ESL Supervisors Association. They attend teaching English to speakers of other language conference as well as the VDOE Ls, uh, Academy. Funding is also used to provide materials for cultural experiences with our newcomers. Title Four Part A is the Student Support and Academic Enrichment Program. This grant is intended to improve students' academic achievement by providing access to a well-rounded education, support the safe and healthy school conditions for school learners, and enhance the use of technologies to, to improve the academic achievement and digi, digital literacy of all students. Our first Title Four grant was awarded in two thousand seventeen, uh, at about two hundred and sixty thousand. And each year it has increased, um, and now we're at a little over eight hundred thousand for our Title Four grants. Again, Title Four focuses on well-rounded, the safe and healthy, as well as additional support in our technology programs. The value of reserve is provided, is provided to identify private schools to support their needs under well-rounded, safe and healthy, and technology. So in our Title Two, as well as our Title Four grants, there is a, a portion of funding that does go to our private schools to support their academic programs as well. There we go. Okay, this picture shows, uh, project-based STEM activities funded by Title Four for elementary, middle, and high school students, especially at Denby Aviation Academy. And the programs are either during school, um, beyond school hours, and also summer, uh, or Saturday. So we kind of try to, uh, embrace a lot of, um, after-school or Saturday programs to keep our students engaged in, in our STEM programs. The federal fund, funding, uh, program or federal program department also works with a few additional specialized grants, such as the Virginia Preschool Initiative in conjunction with our First Step, our pre-K program. We also work with the Virginia Department of Education, Office of School Quality, to provide support and evidence-based instruction on reading and math for identified elementary and middle schools. Title One Part D is a sub-grant of Title One Part A. Uh, this grant supports our Newport News Behavior Health Center. We also have, uh, for Title One, Title Two, Title Three, and Title Four, we have a little over thirteen point seven million dollars. Um, each grant is written to embrace and support our journey, as we said before, Journey Twenty Twenty-Five, to engage and challenge, to develop student success, create environments for students and staff wellness, cultivate employee expertise, foster partnerships, and manage the stewardship of resources. And here's a clear delineation of how federal programs support Journey Twenty Twenty-Five. Our next step is for the board to approve our June, approve by June twenty twenty-two, um, and to submit applications to the Virginia Department of Education by July first. And, um, hopefully, we'll be able to continue what we do with our title programs to support our, uh, instructional programs as well as all of our students. So at this time, I would like to say thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to address them.
Any questions at this time? All right, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
We'll now move on to five point oh four, the attendance report. Five point oh five, the membership report. Five point oh six, construction report. Board members, you receive copies of these reports in your packets. Are there any questions at this time? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move on to item five point oh seven, comments by the superintendent, Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, last night, we were fortunate to, to share the evening with forty-two talented and dedicated educators who represent their school as the next round of Teachers of the Year for Newport News Public Schools. During the banquet, we had the opportunity to recognize each of them for their service and commitment to our students. It was truly an enjoyable evening. Uh, I congratulate all of our Teachers of the Year. I'd also like to personally thank our staff for a very, um, uh, a, a great event last night. It was, it was really a good time. Um, special shout-out goes to our top Teachers of the Year who were announced last night. Congratulations to, um, Ms., Ms. Emily Andrews, our Division-wide Teacher of the Year and Middle School Teacher of the Year. Ms., Ms. Andrews is an eighth-grade civics teacher at Heinz Middle School, and she will move on to the state competition for, uh, state, um, Teacher of the Year. Um, congratulations are in order for Barbara, Mrs. Barbara Brinker, a reading specialist at Newsome Park, who is named, uh, Elementary School Teacher of the Year. And Ms. Tiffany Smith, a CTE teacher at Heritage High School, who was named the High School Teacher of the Year. All three of these teachers will lead my superintendent's teacher advisory committee, uh, next year, and I look forward to their leadership as we have, and look forward to another great year, uh, on that advisory group. On Saturday, along with several members of the school board, I attended the Annual Hampton Roads Committee of Two Hundred Plus Men Scholarship Breakfast in Virginia Beach. This group performs great work in our community, and they serve as ment, uh, mentors to young men across Hampton Roads. The Scholarship Breakfast is their signature event, which honors young men, African-American men who are graduating with at least a three-point-oh GPA or better. Eighty Newport News graduates, um, future graduates were awarded, uh, were recognized at that event. So we want to give kudos out to our young men who were recognized by the Two Hundred Men Organization. We also had dozens of our mentees in the audi, uh, who attended the event from various schools, who came, undergraduates who came to see that event and also be inspired to do better in, um, in their own academic pursuits. So I want to thank the Hampton Roads Committee of Two Hundred Plus Men for all they do to support the, our young men. Congratulations to the Heritage High School Marching Band. They, um, have been invited to participate in the Independence Day Parade at, in our nation's, nation's capital. The students and band boosters have raised the majority of the funds for the trip, and we will be assisting with any remaining, um, costs. After such a difficult start to the school year, I believe I can speak for everyone and say that, including the recent state championship in girls indoor track, the Hurricanes are ending the school year on a positive note. We know they'll represent Newport News Public Schools well in Washington, DC. This May, uh, May is also National Mental Health Awareness Month. I want to acknowledge and, and thank our national award-winning social emotional team, our student support specialists, uh, mental health therapists, school psychologists, and school social workers for all they do for our students. May is also, uh, Better Hearing and Speech Month. In commemoration, we acknowledge our speech-language pathologists and the teachers who support students who are deaf and hard of hearing. Newport News Public Schools has a wide range of resources to support and advance students. So I thank all of our dedicated student advancement team for their work. This is also National Education Bosses Week. Uh, we salute the dedicated work of our academic and support leadership teams and principals across the, the school division and all other department heads, uh, during this week where they're recognized for their leadership. Thank you for your vision, commitment, and servant leadership. What you do every day makes a difference in our school community. Uh, so we thank you and appreciate the leadership that you provide. And this concludes my report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. We will now move on to item six, which is our next audience with members of the public. I'll ask, do we have any cards at this time?
No, sir.
All right, there being no cards, then we will move on to, uh, matters by the school board. So Ms. Patterson, uh, we'll let you go first.
Good evening. Well, uh, we wrapped up our last Sage meeting in this past week, I believe, and we had the opportunity of also electing our new student representative for the school board for the upcoming school year. Her name is Raquel Monadero, and she's a student at Menchville High School. So looking forward to her starting, um, this coming school year. And also, we had various, um, students also participate in Youth Leadership Month for April with the activities that went on during the month. So, um, it's been a very great year with Sage, and I'm glad for the opportunity to help in leading that. And that's all I have to say for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Mr. Hunter?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you may have one meeting left, but if not, I want to thank Ms. Patterson for being a part of this board. I know it was a very, very difficult year, one like none other. So again, thank you for your participation and be a part of this board as you see how we deliberate and how we keep the school system moving. So thank you very much for that. And all I really have to say is that get your books for the students and parents out there. It is test time. We have about one more month, just under a month left to go for school. And again, we're looking for great things that are happening here in Newport News Public Schools. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to give all my time back to others, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. So Ms. Ammon, you're next.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will echo what Mr. Hunter said. For getting into the home stretch, I know this week is SOL week in our house. So just want to encourage everyone to keep getting a good night's rest and a good breakfast and do well on these, on the SOLs and the exams. And graduation will soon be upon us.
Thank you, Ms. Ammon. All right, Mr. Harris.
No comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Ely.
I would like to take this time to thank all the teachers and staff for all the hard work they've been doing this year. We know it was a year of full fledge, just go all the way in. And I just want to thank y'all for doing that, coming out for COVID and just dealing with so many challenges. I want to say the whole Newport News family did an amazing job making sure we meet all the needs of students. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to all the Teachers of the Year. In my book, every teacher in Newport News is a Teacher of the Year, but it's a hard job and someone has to do it. I just want to thank y'all and congratulations to the winners. Also, this weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the May Day 757 event. It was amazing. It was an event geared to all the first responders in the city. So one of the questions someone asked is, what is a first responder? And a first responder is the first one to the scene of anything. So I'd like to thank all our leaders here because y'all are considered first responders because y'all are always the ones that make the first decisions on all the critical things that happens in the school division. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ely.
Oh, one more thing. And I just want to say congratulations to Heritage High School for their road to DC to hit a, like, our superintendent said, they had a kind of rough start, but they are finishing up great. The band is very excited to go to Washington, DC and to represent Virginia. So I just want to say congratulations to Heritage High School Band for having the opportunity to represent Virginia in the Independence Day Parade. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ely. Dr. Best.
Good evening, and I too would like to congratulate all the Teachers of the Year. And I would like to say thank you to all of the teachers and the staff. We know that this time of the year is one of the most difficult times of the year, and you are literally holding your breath waiting until Memorial Day. Just hold on for that weekend, and then you can see the light. So we do appreciate all that you do. For boys and girls and parents, make sure that you're getting a good night's rest, that you are present for your SOL tests, and that you do your very best. And I too would like to commend Heritage High School. I've been a booster and working with them for the last several years as well. We're very proud of them. And Mr. Ely and I, we might make appearances in DC to show them some support as well, but they are finishing strong. We're very, very proud of them, and we know they're going to represent the city well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Best. All right, Ms. Searl's Law.
Teacher of the Year event last night was just phenomenal. It was great to be able to celebrate just in person with our teachers. And I do echo Mr. Ely's sentiment. All teachers are Teachers of the Year this year. It's been a strong, a strong one, but it's also been a year that our administration has really had to figure out how to support the best that they can for our teachers to do their best. So for you all, thank you very much for that as well. I am so encouraged. I know everybody's excited about us coming to an end, but I'm really encouraged about what we have on tap for the summer. So I was very excited to hear how many students were, that are coming our way, what we have to offer, and just the opportunity, you know, honestly, to continue fellowshipping with our students during the course of the summer. So hang in there, everyone. We are almost there.
All right, well, I too am very grateful to our teachers, and it was wonderful to get a chance to participate in the Teacher of the Year banquet last night. Congratulate the teachers, the forty-two teachers who were selected as teachers of their school. And we saw the three Teachers of the Year get crowned for elementary, middle, and high school. That was wonderful to see. Very much looking forward to our support staff of the year, exemplary support staff banquet. That's going to be coming up here in just a few weeks. And as well, our salute to success where we get a chance to honor all the students who are doing great things academically. They're making the honor roll or achieving career and technical education certifications. Those, we will very much look forward to honoring those students and getting a chance to shake their hands, too. And because next time that we see each other, it will be after graduation. I'm going to say happy graduation to all of our graduates right now. And I look forward to seeing you all walk across the stage at graduation. It's going to be a couple of years in the making, long overdue. We're very excited to see you walk across the stage. Ms. Patterson, we will embarrass you. That is a tradition being a board student representative. Expect that we will embarrass you. So we're going to ask them to give you a little bit more time to come across so we can get a picture with you as you come across. All right, and we very much thank you for participating in student leadership or being a representative on the board. Your voice has been very important in this very challenging and critical year that it was. And so we thank you for that. And with that, we stand adjourned.